Good evening. I'd like to welcome all of you to our work session and call this meeting to order. Dr. Watts, please begin the work session.
Absolutely. Thank you. President Vangadhaslam, members of the board, Ms. Howley, staff and team. At this time, I would like to call to the podium our professional development team, specifically from our human resources community. And Chief Human Resources Officer, Mariah Martin, bring our esteemed colleagues and present professional development in Kent School District with Teacher and Leadership Development Director, Kathy Lindowski. Mariah, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, President Vangadhaslam, members of the board, Dr. Watts, Ms. Howley. Tonight, the HR community is pleased to present to you the first of two presentations that we will provide this year on professional development in the Kent School District. Tonight's presentation will provide a mid-year report on professional development and specifically how it is progressing in the KSD 2.0 organizational structure. And I know that question's been asked, how is KSD 2.0 working? And so we're excited to show you the professional development picture in that organizational structure. In the late spring, we will also present a final 2018-2019 executive report on professional development to include the results of the PD needs assessment and the subsequent action plan that will result from those assessment results. The timeline for the assessment and the action planning will be shared tonight in our presentation. Tonight's presentation will highlight examples of the exemplary PD that is happening across the district through KSD's, KSD 2.0's for communities, teaching and learning, student and family support services, organizational effectiveness, and human resources. You will see evidence of the cross-collaboration among those communities and our efforts to develop a premier and diverse workforce, a workforce that is culturally responsive and has an equity-focused lens. Our presentation will not include the multitude of PD offerings, however, also provided at the school level. And many of those trainings include job-alike PD opportunities and PD that is designed to meet the needs identified through the school's school improvement planning process. Much of the school-level professional development is occurring during the early release days on Wednesdays, and I'm excited to share it's not only initiated by our administrators but also by our staff. Without further ado, I'm pleased to announce, to introduce to you, the talented and capable leaders of this work, Kathy Lindowski, who serves as our Director of Teacher and Leadership Development, and Kim Cushman, who is our Assistant Director of Classified Development. So I'll pass it over to them.
Thanks, Mariah. As I was preparing for this, it occurred to me that the last time that I was here to speak was the night that you approved my position and my placement and hire into the position of Director of Teacher and Leadership Development. So I continue to be honored by and thankful for the opportunity to lead this collective and collaborative work. And we really would like for you to hear tonight that professional development is alive and well in the Kent School District, and we're very proud of that. So as we begin, our foundational, our founded, the foundation of our work is really that professional development in KSD 2.0 is about developing and retaining a premier workforce. And we can't have a premier workforce without culturally responsive personnel. So our task is, as leaders in the Kent School District, is to develop the skills and knowledge necessary to lead all of our employees in these areas. We also have, before we talk about the Every Student Succeeds Act, another thing that's happening within our Kent School District that drives this work, I'm fortunate enough to be, have been invited to be a member of our Kent School District Equity Council that meets monthly, is comprised of community members as well as KSD leadership, that is really working on looking at our policies and procedures and how we're encouraging equity in all of our schools. And that committee is working on how can we team with HR, with professional development, and actually looking at a February teaming meeting, whether the Equity Council comes here or HR goes there, whatever, the, the shape and format of that hasn't been decided yet, but that collaboration is in process. That also grounds our work. In addition to those pieces from our Kent School District, on a national level, we're also, our direction comes from federal legislation. So the Every Student Succeeds Act took the place of No Child Left Behind. And there, within that act, now, that act is over 1,000 pages if you really read it, and the professional development definition itself is about a page and a half long. So this is really a snapshot of the six criteria within ESSA that are identified for high-quality professional development. So those, those six criteria are that professional development would be sustained, intensive, collaborative, job embedded, data-driven, and classroom-focused. So ESSA gives us common language, and it also shows us the supports that educators and teachers need to be successful and affect student learning in the classroom. So as we work on all of our current course approvals and development, as well as our planning for the future, we'll be taking these six criteria into consideration. While many of our courses meet some of these, some meet all of them, we're really going to look at them as a whole as we move forward. Oh, animation. So what does professional development look like in 2.0? So organizationally, the program and professional development team is now within the human resources community. We have our four-person core team, Kim and myself, and our admin assistant, as well as HR assistant, plus our teacher mentors are now part of the professional development team. We also have an extended team. The intention of KSD 2.0 was cross-community collaboration, and I can tell you that that is going full steam ahead when it comes to the program and professional development team. Our extended family includes finance, IT, assessment, teaching and learning, and our labor associations. We have been working in partnership with all of those communities, teams, and associations nonstop since we hit the ground running in July. So we're very excited about that. As we talk through this presentation, there are themes that will rise to the top. And we're going to talk specifically about three different areas of professional development, required or expected PD, professional development, as well as enhanced, some new things, or deeper levels of learning, and then also leadership opportunities. Within each of those, the themes that you'll hear are this idea that we're talking about all employees throughout the entire workforce. We're talking about cross-community collaboration. We're looking at how we're, we're using, maximizing our funding opportunities and using multiple sources of opportunity, multiple sources of funding for different PD opportunities, how we're infusing culturally responsive practices, and/or looking at how to evaluate how to better infuse those, and how we are, are working more closely with our labor associations. Within each area, the examples that we give are not meant to be all-inclusive. We're just highlighting a few things. So please don't think we dropped something because it's not on the list. It just wouldn't be possible to list everything. So when we think about required or expected trainings, we have a lot of things going on, and I'm not going to read everything on the slide because I know you can all read, but I'll highlight a few. And I wanted to talk about, you know, our new educator orientation. When our new teachers come, they have two full days that are just for our first-year teachers. They really are immersed in best practice in terms of equitable practices. Our teacher mentors focus on building relationships, making invisible students visible. How to, let's see, so who does the room reflect? They work with teachers on how to set up their room. Teachers have time, the new teachers have time to go back and start setting up their room, and then the new mentors, the mentors visit them while they're doing that to, to help them in that process. A couple other things are, Who Knew It is coming soon. This is a digital online platform. You will have the opportunity for discussion and to review that tonight. It's on the, up for approval. But this also is a platform that would, will make learning accessible for more of our employee groups, and it will be more personalized, aligning with the ESSA expectations. It will allow for follow-up learning, ongoing learning, deeper learning. We have ELL, we have a dual-language boot camp specific for our dual-language teachers, as well as the August Para Institute specifically required for our ELL paraeducators, and then also open to our special ed educators because many of their needs overlap. We have job, very job-specific things like hazardous materials, curriculum-specific, et cetera. HR is also in the process of developing, redeveloping, and developing components for the new employee orientation for cultural responsiveness to specifically highlight some of those, those expectations and skills for every employee. So, let's see. Did I skip it? Okay. Nope, nope. Certificates first. Okay, so when we think about going deeper, professional development, taking skills deeper in this enhanced professional development, I talked about the new teacher mentors, and that program is funded both through the BEST grant, through OSPI, as well as our Title II grant. Our new teacher mentors, this program is considered an induction program. It's not just a welcome program. So it continues, and it really is probably one of those programs that fits all of those six criteria. So our new mentor, teacher mentors take equitable practices to a new level. They really, they give explicit instruction on implicit bias, trauma-informed practice. They give feedback specifically through an equity lens. They're very explicit regarding ELL strategies used in the classroom. They model those strategies in their instruction and call them out specifically to help teachers see them in action. They have a platform to have those courageous conversations in a little safer environment than an evaluator could. We also have our highly capable program, their grant was almost doubled this year. So they've added ACE learning labs, so accelerated clustered enrichment classroom labs, so that teachers can come see what those strategies look like in action. We have our ELL endorsement cohort is continuing where teachers can earn their ELL endorsement on their certificate through Seattle Pacific University, and they're in the process, they think they might be able to actually fill an administrator cohort as well this year. And then a new training in ELL is the collaborative teaching model where they're meeting monthly and working on those skills. ESSA coaches is a great example of this job-alike type training, as well as cross-community training. We have two different things going on. The ESSA coaches are meeting monthly, and then there is also a leadership team meeting monthly, who, and they are working together. And we are developing training on data and assessment where the principals and the ESSA coaches will be working together in some of that learning. And so that's, again, a great example of cross-community collaboration. After our leadership team meetings, we go right into the, the folks who are on the ESSA team, meet and work on that model. It began by, what is the work of our ESSA coaches, and what does that look like, and coming to a collaborative definition of that. And that work is led by our Teaching and Learning Department.
So classified staff. My position, as you all know, is new to the district, and to me, that's just an exciting opportunity. Right when I started, my initial focus was really just to meet with all of my labor partners and to really hear from them the professional development needs of our staff and how we can really truly address those. In that work, we identified a real strong need to review and update all of our current certificate programs, or certificate programs that are offered for most of our labor partner groups, and they needed some revamping. So in that work, we are working to align those certificates to have common themes throughout. So staff, or training that various staff members should all be receiving is all, is united throughout those various certificate programs. Also, the need to add position-specific enrichment, specific training for their jobs. And so in that work, we are adding a section on social emotional health. In that section of training, we've added MTSS training for classified staff. We offer that at the Para Institute. That's exciting stuff. It was, it was focusing on supporting student behavior. We also, like I said, added position enrichment, and so the focus of that will be to add very specific targeted trainings. So a ELL paraeducator can get ELL paraeducator training. An admin five and office manager can get specific office manager training. And so we want to make sure that we're offering what they need to the staff through those certificate programs. Also, is offered some opportunity for enrichment. Our diversity section, which we've had for years, we've added some new offerings to that, such as the welcoming our diverse community offering. We launched that as well with the Para Institute. That's, was really well-received. Will and the multilingual team did an awesome job of delivering that. It focuses on identifying the needs of the students in their classroom, being able to use the district tools that are provided, common cultural knowledge that they need to be aware of in dealing with our students. It is, again, really well-received. So a lot of work in the certificated world and exciting new enrichments that are happening.
So we also have some opportunities for our leadership, our leadership staff, and I will highlight a few of those. So our KSD leadership teams, we have a charge, and we are, the focus of our leadership teams are around equity and action, and that's leadership equity in, leadership and equity work, leadership and excellence work, and leadership and community work. And we have a planning team that is a cross-community planning team, as well as representations from our, from our building leadership. And this is a really great example of cross-community work, as we're all coming together. And it was a really powerful moment today when we were talking about the base of our next meeting and the pieces of it that really supported the excellence and the equity and community, and how, when you really get down to it, they are all dovetail, dovetail together. You don't, you may have a heavier focus on one, but you can't pull them apart. And so that was very powerful for us as we were doing our planning. And we're talking through all of these things in order to really keep our leadership team time-for-PD focused and on target with our district initiatives, as well as the needs of our students. So we have HR PD sessions, which, and HR University, these are two different things. We have planned six different sessions throughout the year for our leadership, and we've completed two of them. One was on corrective action, and one was on performance. And they have been pretty well-attended, at least 30 administrators probably at each one. And the HR University is an all-day professional development opportunity that our HR team is developing that will happen during the summer, probably in August, all things HR that building leaders need to know. We have, our Teaching and Learning Community is also leading Plan Do Study Act, PDSA. We just had a small session led on this by one of our principals as well. Plan Do Study Act, this continuous quality improvement cycle that we want to be on with our students and in our own work. And you'll see that later in the presentation, how we're, how we've applied that to our work as well. We also have tech talks that are, are new, being led by our organizational effectiveness community. And these, they're developing lunchtime-focused trainings that can be accessed through technology for administrators. So they will be smaller segments of information that can be accessed from anywhere, tech talks. So we're excited about all of these things happening within our communities to date. We have additional leadership opportunities in place for internal advancement within the KSD community as well.
So one of the ways that we're focusing on internal advancement, which I'm really excited about, is our partnership with Antioch University and our Class Dert program. I had the privilege of working with this program in my previous role in HR, and I'm excited to continue that work now over in PD. We are in our first cohort, they are a year in, which is exciting. They're working on their student teaching. We are, we have planned our third open house for the launch of our second cohort. And in our partnership with Antioch, we're exploring, and it looks like we might be able to launch next year, a bachelor completion program. So our paraeducators that have an AA will also be able to join this program, earn their bachelor's degree and their teacher certification through Antioch University. It's exciting work, and I'm really, really glad that we can offer that for our paraeducators and our current employees.
So at the community conversations, I had a parent from one of my former schools, where I was a principal, approach me because they have their degree already, they, they have their certification, and they are, are able to substitute teach, but they are interested after staying home to raise their children for a few years, they're very interested in returning to the classroom, and they wanted to meet with me and talk about what classes I would recommend, or how they could gain access to some classes to prepare them in another year and a half or so to come back into the workforce on a permanent basis, which gave me this idea of, you know, a return to the classroom series. So that's something we're looking at because I think we're talking a lot about, you know, getting people in and how do we bring our conditional certs up to speed, et cetera. But we have another pocket of people I think we could really work on developing, rather than waiting till they get here to develop. So that's, that's something that's under construction right now, and I'm going to be talking more with that particular parent, just to get a feel, hear from them as well, where they're thinking those areas are, and also knowing that we will probably know some areas they may not be thinking of. So I'm very excited about that work. We continue our leadership cohorts and partnerships in the areas we have been doing those. We've had administrative interns, as well as, we have a CTE intern as well. We have our assistant principals and our aspiring principals that we'll start meeting with after the break. And we're looking forward to continuing to grow, grow those folks in their skills and their, their vision of where they, what they can do and what they have to offer. So we know what we're doing, but we also know we have a lot of things left to do, some of which we don't even know what they are yet. And we are due this year for our comprehensive needs assessment in regards to professional development. So our next steps are to assess the professional development needs of all of our staff. So this would be teachers, our classified staff, our building leaders, our district leaders, everyone in our KSD community. And then we're going to gather this required data to develop the PD, a menu of PD options. And also, we want to comply with all of our grant requirements as well. So that, that's the next step. So as we think about this Plan Do Study Act, we put it into this context. This is our preliminary and proposed timeline, as we haven't, I've been through this work on the receiving end and taking the survey, but this is looking at the past timelines and our own expectations for the work and the training we've received. This is what we're proposing and hoping will be our timeline for implementation. So in December and into January, we will, we will create the, the needs assessment, and we'll consider the information available. One, the questions, we want our questions to be consistent with past questions so we can compare historical data, but we want the questions to give us, the answers to give us information we need to develop the programs that we are expecting, especially in the area of cultural responsiveness. We want to make sure we're covering and getting as much, leveraging this to get as much information as we can, the right information to really create effective programs. We want to take stakeholder input, historical data, student data, as well as staff and community data. So what did the past tell us? What do our surveys tell us? What does our student assessment data tell us about what's happening in our district? And then have that ready for review and approval once we have it created. In February and March, we hope to have that survey window open, and we hope to organize the results and compile a report. To study the results of that report, we're looking at May through July to share and present those results, and then really analyze and plan for district-wide, a district-wide professional development plan. Our goal is to be ready by August to implement, and then start monitoring and reporting out the results of that monitoring to put that plan into action. So again, PD in the Kent School District is alive and well. We are proud to be leading the charge, and our end game is really to improve student learning and helping all of our students have the skills they need to make a choice for their future in our world. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you so much. This is really exciting, and it's really nice to hear.
Thank you.
I did have a couple of questions. So thinking about, well, first of all, we talked, you talked about training for the entire workforce. So is this mandatory training that will be, is that going to be implemented in the contract language, or what does this look like as far as how we're getting to?
That is a question that doesn't have an answer right now, because when you talk about mandatory training and implementing through contractual language, that all happens in bargaining. So I think the plan, the results of the plan will drive the needs, and then we'll have to, to talk about what, what filling those needs looks like and what the priorities are.
Can I add to that?
Yes. We certainly can use the parameters that are already in our contract to provide required training. So we have some designated time for our administrators to work with our teachers. We are absolutely able to work within those parameters. So we have some spaces already in our CBAs that we can work within that space.
And then, I'm thinking about the monitoring. So is that something, so, of course, it's to improve student outcomes, and so the monitoring process as far as like that paraeducator training and that classroom teacher training, how would that be monitored, or is there a plan to monitor that directly?
Depends on what we're implementing.
So like the MTSS, for example. So if you're looking at discipline, right? So is there a tie to expected outcomes for teachers or staff that go through that training to decrease certain amounts of behaviors, or what does that look like?
Well, I'm not sure what it looks like right now because it will depend on the pieces we're implementing, what best practice tells us about what we should be monitoring to see the results of that. And it, it's not all necessarily about an ELA score. It may be about office referrals, it may be about suspensions, it may be about attendance. So it will depend on what the specific strategy is we decide to implement, and then we'll work closely with our assessment team, as well as our MTSS team, and, and also looking into best practice.
And my last question is, who are, who's going to be providing the professional development and training? What modules, what type of curriculum are you going to be bringing in to do that?
For which?
For example, the culturally responsive practices, there was some culturally responsive instruction, or some culturally responsive practices and training that, that you mentioned were going to happen. The, I see the Who Knew It, that's the adult digital platform, is that right, for the training?
And they may have some modules in there, but that wouldn't be our be-all and end-all.
So as we think about designing the new employee orientation, I think that's the one that maybe you were thinking about, that we, it is required training for all of our new employees, and we do want to redevelop our new employee orientation to include a very specific focus for a portion of the agenda on culturally responsive practices. We haven't defined yet where we're going to be getting that curriculum, to answer your question. Certainly, we would love some suggestions and ideas if you have some, and then we'll be working with our partners to, to look at neighboring districts, what they've done. But we are in the, very much at the pre-development stage of that. We know it's needed, and we're ready to develop that for this fall with our new employees coming on board.
So Kent was one of the districts that got the grant for, for the NEA for the WA training.
Absolutely.
So is that, so that's maybe an example of how has that worked been? Is that some of the work that's going to continue? Because I know that's a.
I'm so glad you brought that up because Kathy had the opportunity to meet with Kristi, I think just last week, and begin to partner on the trainings that they're doing, to include, could we offer some of those here at the district office? And then maybe work with them to say, okay, as we develop our new employee orientation, what are some things that we might be able to look at in that training?
All right, thank you.
One of the things that, that we did talk about in that meeting was that their trainings are filling up, and so they only have so much space. So how might we provide another opportunity for? So, how might we provide another opportunity for more space, so more people can get access to that training? So, those conversations are happening. We also talked with someone through Learning Forward, the National Professional Development Organization. They've received some grant funding to provide trainer-trainer modules for districts. We haven't had time since that conversation to really explore or vet that possibility. Our teacher mentors attend Mentor Academy 201, which is focused on equity, and they have a lot of research-based equity training there. So, we're looking at that model and that, the information that they have and the processes and procedures that they use, and how we might bridge with them to include and use those in more venues. We're also looking at, OSPI has developed, and TPEP and CELED, they've developed explicit equity components for the principal training, for the new administrators, and they're working on developing for the administrators who've already gone through the training as the next component to explicitly call out, what do these teaching culturally practices look like in the classroom? New principals are being taught how to observe and look for that. So, we have several resources. We have to vet and see if in combination, they're what we need, or if we need to bring in something else.
I have two, too.
Yes.
So, on the classified front, we are adding as a requirement on their certificates, although they're an incentive program, it is a requirement to have that diversity training on there. We are changing that and adding that to make it a more equitable practice training, and that we can add those trainings and have those morph with the needs of the district and our students as time goes on. We see the need that identifying one specific class isn't going to get it. It needs to be open to a category, that every certificate for every classified group should have that category on it, and what that looks like could change. But in, I can just testify to the fact that in bringing out this new training that we just brought out with the multilingual team on welcoming your diverse community, it's, our staff are eager to attend these trainings. Our only challenge is how many we can offer, because they want to come. They want to better serve their students. They're very invested in this work, and they want to be connected to their students on a deeper level. And it's, I just find that it's very refreshing how responsive they are. So, on the classified front, it's just how many we can offer. They want to come. They want to come to these trainings, they want to learn more, they want to have a deeper understanding, which is great.
I know that in the past, and having gone to different PDs as a teacher, their teachers have different, or staff have different levels of knowledge, expertise, and how are we going to ensure that if someone goes to a specific professional development class, or module, whatever, that it isn't something that they already know? How are we going to have it leveled, so that they're able to hit different levels of knowledge?
Well, within the description of any course, we have a description of what the course entails, what the session entails. So, part of that is going to be the teacher knowing they already know this part of that. That's my initial thought there. I think we have to be really clear in what the class is and what it's offering. And then, there is going to be some level of differentiation, as in any class.
So, you would be offering, hopefully, different levels of, in a certain area, so like a beginning level and-
Potentially.
Okay, that's good. And the MTSS, I know that all the schools are at different levels, and I know the MTSS team is working on that, and I'm glad to hear that you're working with them also, because I think that's really important.
And our MTSS team is partnering with our teacher-mentor team as well, for their instruction. And the teacher-mentor team is also partnering with many of the building-level coaches.
Last year, we had a teacher come to us, a science teacher come to us, saying that she had signed up for a specific, I think, content-specific, I would imagine, some form of science PD, and it was canceled. And how are we going to handle that, so that people do get what they need? I mean, I guess the "who knew it" will help in some respects, but if it's an in-person thing, how are we going to?
Well, we continue to offer next-generation science standards courses. We had an example, we had a Saturday class, 15 people signed up, and there were four people who were actually there. So, had the instructor known that ahead of time, that might have been an example of a class that got canceled or rescheduled. I can't speak to that specific example, because I don't know what occurred. I mean, our goal, some of these, a lot of our science classes are mandatory training, so we typically would reschedule, but I'm not sure what the circumstances there might have been.
Oh, and about the "who knew it," and I guess I could ask this later, but I'm kind of interested now, when would we start that up? I know we have to, it's by December 15th or something.
Well, we're hoping as soon as possible. I've been working, we've been working really closely with our technology teams. They'll give us a discounted rate, which is always incentive. If we can move on that by December 15th, it's on the board agenda tonight. We've had some preliminary discussions of how, just logistics already, of how we can offer this, the parameters that we need to place around, how many clock hours an educator would be able to earn. It also will be available for classified staff, which is exciting. It's going to touch, many different employees would be able to access online learning in various areas. They have everything on this platform, from technology training, to leadership, to social emotional health, classroom management. It really is an expansive library. So, our goal is the sooner the better.
And one more question about that. It said it was for a year. So, if we start it now, or January, does it go through December, and then we're done if we don't sign up for it again? Is that basically, and we would assess it?
That's my assumption, that it is a full calendar year. So, from the point of purchase, we would have one full calendar year.
All right, thank you.
You've answered many of my questions already, so thank you. And I think I'm trying to reconcile kind of three different things I'm hearing here. Trying to get access to an expansive array of learnings to meet the needs, but we also need to do a needs assessment, which hasn't happened yet. So, we may be meeting needs that aren't needed, and coming short on needs that are needed. There's a lot of needs. But, kind of what I'm saying, what we're going for may not be what we need. I know it was one example, but you had an example, too, of a canceled class, a lot of people not showing up, suggests that there's a gap between what people can do and what they need, and then how we're offering it. So, my question is about how are we analyzing what happened, and saying, this is what happened, this is how we need to change, this is why this new thing, whatever it is, is going to correct for issues we had in the past, or provide for more opportunities that weren't there in the past?
Well, the online platform is something that, especially with our classified folks, we've been hearing requests for, for several years, in terms of the hours that some of our classified folks work, prevent them from attending the hours that classes are offered. We have, you know, whether it's, can we get substitutes, so teachers can come during the day, or will they come after work? We have not done an analysis since I have been here, which, I don't know that we have the data to, I don't believe we have the data in terms of how many teachers signed up, and then how many actually are on the sign-in sheet in the end, because that's the records we have. So, that's work that we have to decide, how are we going to start gathering data to analyze that way? We have qualitative data in terms of what people have told us, what our labor partners have told us. And so, that's what we have been working off of right now, as well as the required and compliance pieces. So, what are required courses for implementing a new curriculum? What are the required components for writing an IEP, et cetera?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, again, most of mine have been answered, but I did have a couple. So, on, I know one of the things we've talked about over and over again, when we're doing discipline reports or safety reports, is a need for training and focused training on things. And I know you mentioned collaboration between the different groups. So, can you maybe speak just a little bit about how you might be partnering, say, with Randy Heath and the work that he's doing on discipline, and how that's impacting what you're doing for training?
Well, that directly comes back to the MTSS work, the coaches working with buildings, meeting them where they're at, and taking them to the next step. I think it all comes back to the equity work in terms of developing relationships, and really getting to know our students, getting to know our staff, and being able to help them, one, connect with the learning, and then access it and really learn. So, that's a multifaceted question. And I think it all really comes back to this equity work.
Great. And then, my other one is really on cultural responsiveness and cultural biases, knowing, helping people learn what their cultural biases are. I know there's courses offered on that. Have we thought at all, as a district, of how to make that maybe a required course, or something for all, and what, or thought about what that might look like?
I think we've thought about it, but again, with the needs assessment coming up, some of it will be needs assessment-driven, some of it will be, again, compliance-driven. Your question is, have we thought about the mandatory piece for the cultural responsiveness? So, we have thought about that, and that, again, is multifaceted in terms of the time that's available. The place we're starting right now, because that is not going to be off the plate. The place we're starting right now is how do we create the capacity in our leadership to really understand equity, to lead through an equity lens, to have an equity stance? I believe you got a copy, or you have a copy coming your way, of our equity stance and our equity lens. And one of the things we've been working on is, the tri-fold is a table tent. Many of our teachers have seen that on tables in their buildings. And the three parts of that are, you know, we know that high-quality organizations lead with a common vision. They have common goals, common values. So, that's one side of our tri-fold. We know that the research says, high-quality groups have the most effective outcomes when they practice norms, how they interact with each other, and that's a research, those are research-based norms. The third side is equity stance. How do we look at and approach conversations with an equity stance? And the equity stance, those components, come from the work of Glenn Singleton, who leads the work and wrote the book on courageous conversations about race, and also Heidi Schillinger, who is the lead for Equity Matter. She's a consultant with OSPI. So, OSPI backs these stances, and all three of the instructional framework leaders in Washington, whether it's Danielson, Marzano, or CELED, are using these same norms for their equity stance. So, we have our organization's values and vision and goals, we have our norms for how we interact, and then we have our equity stance, how we look at this, and how we take a new look. And then, you also have the equity lens. The equity lens, our questions that scaffold and support us to overcome our bias, or our default, or our automatic thinking, questions we can ask ourselves as we're reviewing curriculum, instruction, stories we're going to tell in the classroom, activities we're going to host as a PTA, decisions we're going to make. And if we ask ourselves these questions in the equity lens bookmark, if we continually are asking ourselves those questions, pretty soon, we don't have to refer to that piece of paper anymore. That becomes an equity stance, part of our stance, having seen multiple perspectives when we're thinking about these things. So, we are starting with a focus on our leadership, until we have a really detailed, multi-year plan. We are gathering from, we have a lot of expertise on our leadership team, we're pulling from that expertise, and we're putting it into everything we're doing.
Thank you. Excited to see what happens.
Me, too.
I have two questions.
Okay.
No, you're tired.
No, we're fine.
So, the first question is really the funding issue. So, I saw that you're using Title II, I think, for formative assessment and new teacher training, and then there's Title I for ESSA. So, how are we, I know we can use different titles to fund, are there shortages anywhere that you're seeing for that particular?
Well, we have a lot of people that want to do a lot of things, that we can't fund everything. But again, we need an organized, well-thought-out and backed-up the reasons-for plan. So, we have some of the funding, there are parameters around what it can be used for. So, it starts there. And one of the things that's happening this year that hasn't happened in the past, is we're having categorical funding, you know, Mr. Vella just hosted a categorical funding meeting with cross-community members, and, well, actually, I think Mr. Rarick organized that, but, where we're looking at, what are all of our categorical dollars, and what are our district initiatives, what are our district priorities? And so, that we're not working in silos within each grant, that we're looking at the big picture, and what are the funding parameters for each grant, and how can we make sure we are supporting these priority initiatives? So, that work is starting this year, and that's actually very exciting as well.
Okay, thank you. That was a good question. And then, finally, I wanted to kind of get a picture of EL and IE departments, as well as we have our own Equity Council. So, can we sort of envision them coming together? Because I know they do their own independent training. I know at the SEAC meetings, I've seen different organizations be brought in to do the professional development on dyslexia, or whatever that may be. So, is that something that you're looking at, kind of collaborating? Because it's like open doors for multicultural families. I mean, they do, right? They do the EL and the IE work together. So, looking at that kind of collaborative, where you can leverage some funding as well?
We haven't looked at open door. I have worked with them before, not with funding, but informally. That isn't one that's been on our radar right now, but we'd love to look at anything possible.
Great. Yes.
I'd also add that in KSD 2.0, those three are under learning support. So, you have EL, IE, and CTE. And the opportunity to cross-collaborate under the leadership of Jennifer Jones and learning supports is really, I think, one of the benefits of KSD 2.0 and the way it's been reorganized, so that we can include more opportunities like that. Kim and I were also talking about, when we have similar types of jobs, whether it's a para or a clerical staff, and the need to, what was the skill we were talking about that we said would cross across multiple jobs? Thinking through, could we think about developing professional development? That's not just open to ELL paras, it's also open to IE paras, it's open to clerical staff, because they all share the need to be competent in that skill, whatever that may be.
That came up, was with the co-teaching model.
Yeah.
Especially at the elementary level, that's come up quite a bit. The training is not there, the cross-training. So, that and, well, that's it.
And that's, you know, Title III for ELL, it has to be very specific to language acquisition work. And then, the special ed funding also has some very tight parameters. So, we're looking at other ways to fund those cross-collaboration-type of activities as well. And a lot of that is just good teaching. So, how do we open that up to all of our employees?
Thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Questions?
Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you. You. Thanks. So, we are at 6:19. We will recess the work session for an executive session for approximately 30 minutes at 6:30, to discuss complaints or charges against an employee, and to review the performance of a public employee. We will be back at 7 o'clock.